Number the fourth, two thousand and fifteen. This last evening's meeting, the board is now in session with a forum of forthcoming presentations. This is a workshop. And built a workshop on. We're going to try and move as smartly through this as we can, but we have to agree or disagree as the presentation is being made. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, may I introduce the people who are sitting at the table in front of us and ask them to turn around and identify themselves to the audience. Danny, our professional engineer, Tyler Wainwright, just beside him, also with Tetra Tech, those with Severn. They are going to try and explain to me what it is. And Mr. Tinko, do you intend to go through on the, on the report? Julia Thiede on line. Mr. Tinko, would you please proceed?
Thank you. Clarify. You for this document. About a week ago, I made a presentation to you of this document right here. There has been one change made to it that's nothing more than an endorsement of by the documentation. Scott had asked me, they had sent it to me today, and I went through it, and without doing an Evelyn Wood speed reading, I. It's evident the addition of Tetra Tech. So, that being said, with the Tetra Tech, with Molly, Severn Trent, and the Pelican Gateway, a document that defines what our pond standards are. We've not had anything that's some years later than should have been before. The plan done by Johnson Engineering back in eighty-six, if it just ever was put together. A lot of people, those that have already done these type of studies, Lee County people, Ernesto de La Vega and his staff, our staff, Pelican Preserve staff, and tried to come up with a document essentially. One, I believe that we define and continue to define the method, not necessarily erosion control. I think we've pretty well bridged on this. So, this is purely pond maintenance and littoral. And that is, is that the development order prevails. The development order prevails. In the absence of a, and relating to water quality, and we've got that defined in the report as being a methodology that requires testing on a monthly basis, and that if we flow. Consecutively for two months, fail water quality is defined by the tropic state index, which is recommended by the county. Next two months, three or four. System. For example, if we're down on Basin Five, which is the weird number nine basin. Failed two times, indicating that we have a water quality problem. We then go downstream to the three main basins that feed in. If in a two-month consecutive period, any of those, or all of those failed, we then go for two more months of testing of every pond in the entire basin. So as to try to find out what is the source of the problem that's creating the. So, that's the second part of this, such that if you have a development order, let's take a development order for several. Absolutely no, has no provision for littorals. Unless and until we have a water quality event that would signal that out as being a problem, and that, that being this testing, and it shows that a, an issue needs to be, it could be. And it could be a whole bunch of. Then we go in and implement the recommendations of the, the third. Lee County ten dash four eighteen section. Whereas Lee County planned for ten four eight, oh, years ago, make it a little bit longer. We've got a lot of communities in Gateway that were built before that, that were built before that, and it's just basically very difficult to do. But we like to follow the general idea of it, and that is that the twenty-five percent littoral planning, instead of a thousand square foot minimum, we're looking hundreds. The, the recentest example, Cypress Cave, one I just looked at, has a requirement for littorals of twenty-five hundred linear feet. Five hundred linear. Feet, that means if it's twenty-five hundred feet, you have to put one every foot, and that's not. For plants. Just for. So, you divide. By a third, and if you did four breasts, you get it to four. In the communities where we have, like Cypress Cave, where it's one-hundred percent shoreline, having every property, and as ten four eighteen says, unless it's a last resort, they want to try to stay away from planting littorals along residential shorelines. That is their second suggestion, and that is their recommendation of the county. The requirement. Square footage. And sometimes one and one doesn't equal two. In those cases. Able to make that twenty-five percent in place. Places to where, that, that needs to be engineered and looked at. Good example would be from, well, talking to experts, where water comes into the pond or that would. Coming in. Filtered water going out. So, you'd want to direct your attention to put littorals in that area. In the corners of ponds, everybody suggests that's another place to put the littorals, primarily for a protection on erosion. And then the last one is, is we know the majority of Gateway was not built in accordance with the plans and specifications as it relates to onsite drainage. These people did not put in these swales that were disposed lots. Those to come down, be caught in a swale, and then discharge out into. As they came in. Build it, and it just sheet blows right down. Some property owners had a swale between their lots and a swale to the. Into the engineering. Of the erosion control, that we would want to make sure that we understand that this would be a potential for a. Into that, to try to protect that from further erosion control. I just don't think that we can get in to do what we did over at Hoss, Fallen Lake. Creating on each and every lot in Gateway. Supposed to. LME. It's not big enough. I don't think you've got enough dirt to do it. You'd be, it would be. It's a shame we got to this position, but it's. That is what. Essentially, what we've tried to put together here is a set of standards. This is not. It's the first step of trying to get this thing going, to, to create and follow a policy of pond maintenance, and especially the littorals. We have ponds in here that we don't have littoral requirements, have not been maintained. They have not been maintained. They need to be maintained. And we have ponds in here that don't have littoral requirements, that we need to address that on the implementation following of the development orders. So, I don't know where you want to start, but to me, the key item on this has been the discussion back to the March meeting, what it is. Twenty-five percent. That's the.
Right there, and I think you've. In a. Second, Cal, did you have something you wanted to?
Just to supplement or go along with what, what it is suggesting half ago. Going through several reviews by the Pelican Group. What we've. Just give. Twenty-five percent. As Ed said, a hundred percent doesn't mean that every lineal foot of a lake bank has to be planted. It, you know, the requirement is, or is measured by, if you look at the material here, we took Lake One Oh Six, I think, and. With the. Parameter, eight-hundred-foot lake. Well, you go from the control elevation down, and it's twenty feet. That's the, the planted littoral shelf. So, twenty feet times eight. Feet. Or square feet of shoreline to have. Can be all. In one big group. Square feet. The, at twenty-five percent, you're looking at four thousand. Now, there's a minimum of one thousand, and that's roughly a fifty-foot stretch. So, fifty foot by twenty gives you. It's not. Plant. That's just, the shelf has to be planted. I think what's suggested in here is three per foot, and so, you know, you'd have a hundred and fifty that area. The. What we also included for your consideration is the section of the Lee Code that. Dash four. And it also shows you what we've got here.
This. Is. Development order. That development order that Cal just read from, it's from this document right here, and it ain't the development order.
I, I just. There's eight hundred lineal feet of shoreline.
Why, what's, what's the basis of this calculation?
Using an example, there, this particular lake has eight hundred feet. It could be any lake. It could be a lake with a thousand feet. It showed that. The square footage for, to beat the standard, or the code. How do you calculate it? That's all that is. It doesn't say that. Doesn't reference is.
To me, the reference should be, we're following the development order, guys.
Well.
That's the basis.
The development ERP. Then you have to follow the permit requirement.
Show, show me the ERP. We don't. Got the. Art so far ahead of the horse. That's what's been going on here. It's been kicked down the road so many years. Your firm was here for years, years. Did your. Your firm, at any meeting, bring up this stuff? Nobody brought that up, so it's, what's water over the dam. But the issue is, we. And that's. That's why we put this plan, and that's why I thought we were retaining. And we have a price for somebody to come in here and provide us fifty-nine accurate development orders and ERPs for our ponds. I don't know how we can justify to the residents suspending, unless.
Stop. Stop right there. I, at least, for one person, have been under the impression that. That the development order was the bible if I were going to. Start with. You and I just had a conversation earlier today that the development orders that I have invited. Are not. In fact, accurate. Now, are you going to, are you going to confirm that in public to everybody here?
The, the documents that I have been given on three ponds are not accurate, because they are not the ponds that were built. They're not the plans. There's talking again to Rick Ryland, and this is why, we can sit here and beat this horse until it's just dead a hundred times. The answer is, let's get a professional and. ERPs and find out what they actually say. This one here at One Oh Six, that Cal just talked about, is a prime example of Ryland's skill. About. Things you put, put the plants in here. He said, there's nothing about plants and littorals. He says, we're defining a litt zone.
Okay, just stop.
It's a zone, so we're, we're mixing, we're mixing terminology.
Okay, just right there. What. Members have to say about what they've heard so far, because it's, it is very, it's very confusing to me, and I've spent more than a little bit of time with it. Ladies, Pam.
It's a little confusing to me. I just think. We need to start from a baseline, and. And then coming back. So, what I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear the do. Like to hear what everybody proposes.
Well, I believe, I believe the standard. The. Pelican Preserve and the Gateway Groups, and Tetra Tech, and Severn Trent, agree as the standards that we're proposing to the, to the board. Again, I go back to the issue that. The development order and ERP prevail. The issue, the issue is. Supposed to be.
So, we need to start with the.
We need to start with those. Exhibit. Was going to make. A presentation a month ago, I don't know what happened. Have a proposal. Those documents. And the latest, up-to-date copy of those documents. I really think that you need to have those. One, and most importantly, is that we're going to be doing thirteen ponds in Phase One, on the. Doing. Thing I. Want to see, as a resident and as an engineer, is to go in there and be placing. Of a hundred. Dollars plus a foot. To do erosion control, and then find out act that we. From. The DO, the ERP, or water quality that indicates that we need to be putting in littorals. There's ways that we can do those erosion control techniques and not necessitate cut the product.
Okay, stop.
The expensive product.
Stop right there.
That's why I wanted.
Have you had your question?
Can I ask, Danny?
Sure.
What were your findings that support what Ed has said about the development order, and where we need to start, and so forth and so on?
Here's. We need authorization still, so that, that research has not been done. And what we did was we got a proposal from Home Montes, it's home. We asked them for prices. They, they have most of this in-house. We need, you know, as soon as. Be able to pull that information. So, our three. There's the. The development order, there's the ERP, and then there's our, there's our new standards. So, we need to know what's. There may be development orders that we find that have nowhere to. Find that. The ERP has no requirement, which means that our standards in that case would govern. However, we may have a K development order. Our standards for the RP. At that point, the development order will govern. That work is. We're guessing at this point. We do have most of the Ps. Would be a lot, would be a lot less, but I think within, you know, two, three weeks, given all.
What kind of. Price did they put?
It was sixty-eight hundred dollars. Eight fifty.
Pam, are you good for now?
Yes, I am.
Margaret?
The, the question that I have is, I know we keep hearing the development order fail twenty-five percent. But with minimum. I don't want us to get boxed in. I think twenty-five percent is a great standard to start with, but there may be cases where we want to plant more, or we need to plant more, like if a lake is mostly on preserve and golf course, there may be reasons why we want more than twenty-five percent.
What, what research, what research have you done on that?
I haven't done any, that's why I'm asking the question.
And the research that I have found is that everybody's telling me the reason the county took twenty-five percent is it's a waste of money to go, you know, get. That's why they went to twenty-five.
Okay.
With you on the. As far as I'm concerned, you can throw in three things. The FPL, the golf course, and the wetlands. Lakes. In Gateway. Hundred eighty-nine thousand feet. Forty-two percent of that is non-residential. So, if you want to go to forty-two percent on those areas, have at it. Problem is, the resident. And the county makes it clear that they do not recommend, but the littorals on residential backlot lines. They say. So, the thing is, when you've got a percent. That's why. When we get. Those ponds. We need to meet that twenty-five percent, if that's what's in the DO. Going to have. On those ponds.
And I'm assuming between lots would be the logical place. The.
Probably. In my mind, the, the second item, the first item, well, the third item, really. The first item was the, put it on all your inlets and your outlets. Second one is to put it in your corners. The corners, that, that gives you, and affords you additional erosion protection in the curves. We know that we've had problem in the curves. Then the lake. You can. Walk, there's several lots that where you have, it, it's physical. Sheet blow that goes right between two yards and goes down into the lake, and those may be ones that you want to go in and.
So, the thing. Even in what you presented from Lee. So, I'd like, instead of it to be maintained at a maximum of, of twenty-five percent, that it be a minimum. That's the. Case. Is where we would need to put more in, like you were saying, if it, if we needed it for the erosion control between lots, then I don't want, I don't want anybody coming back to us and saying, we, our lake is. Plants. Out. I think we need to give ourselves a little bit of leeway in cases where.
Put some type of, words we used to use, weasel words, in there that define how you're going to do that, that it's either a water quality or an erosion issue, such to that, that would be the necessity for going over twenty-five percent. I could talk about that. But if it's purely to do it, to be doing it, it's a waste of money. It's a waste of money.
And let's. Say, because we've got both sides of this issue, I know there's a lot of. But then again. And there are people that like them. They like, you know, they attract wildlife. They wander around in there, kind of fishes. People that are. Going to want plants behind their house. Can they do?
And you have people that want to keep them. For those. Take them out. Solves that problem. They want to keep them, let it keep them. But on the other hand, you're going to have to maintain them, right? Miss. Our. Littoral maintenance policy is non-existent.
And I. Stony. Where the littorals are on the shelf, it does control the erosion off of the banks. And I know we don't like to hear that, people.
Off the bank. I don't know why we've got so many highly rated Stony Brook ponds in Phase One.
Well, that's because. But where. They are, they are.
If you put the littorals, and I don't want to get into an argument with. Have. Go back. Right now, in an area that is abrogant, and it has a twelve to an eighteen-inch scarpen, and put in dirt, and plant littorals, and first rain comes, your littorals are going to be at the bottom of the sea. No work. The product. To do it, and it's costing us a lot of money.
And I'm not suggesting that. I. People that. Do like the littorals, if that's.
If they like them in their backyard, and it's in non, what do you call it, non-DO issue, then let them keep them if they want them. But those that don't, I think, into the. We have to. We have to follow them. Now, if that pond. We go. Straight back to the pond standards, do the engineering biological studies, and then not be. Get out on. Limb on littorals. Their issues. And see what these ponds. Years. To think of the sludge that's in the bottom of the pond behind my house's house. We need to be. Addressing that. So, there may be. Just.
I just, I would just prefer that the word maximum requirement be changed to minimum requirement, so that we have the capability without. In locations issue.
By fifty percent for the heck of it. It's a waste of money.
We have a, we have a gentleman here from Pelican. Could. Margaret?
My name's Doug Zander on Pelican Preserve Pond Committee. Most of our ponds that we've had for a while are closer to the seventy percent on, and I'm hoping that you're not, we're not saying we've got to rip out littorals. I mean, we don't have bank, our bank erosion issues are minimal, and I think it's because of the fact of the littorals we have. And I wouldn't hope we didn't come up with that we. And rip things out. If we did that, then we'd have to exclude our ponds from this. I mean, that'd be.
And. And that did concern me, because in one of these pages, it said, it, it actually says that it's calculated and, and or. Five percent. And I don't think we want to just, we. Really need to take them out everywhere.
One of, one of the first things, and again, we're, we're doing the same thing that we've done forever and ever. What's their development orders called for? Development order. What do their development orders call? They were done a lot later, though, most of. They may have.
Even if the.
And if they do, so be it, let them. Our, our issue is, is that we have people here in this community that want the DO followed. And that's the basis of why we're following that. Apply fighters. That type of littoral planning, so be it. It doesn't impact any of this whatsoever.
But if their, if their development order calls for twenty-five percent and they've got seventy, we. Plants and the development order calls for, we got to go rip them out.
If they can explain that to their residents and pay for that, and their people are happy with that, so be it. So be it.
I just think it needed, it needs to be clear, it's a minimum requirement.
My question, paragraph. Yeah, it says, in Pelican Preserve, it is recognized that all pond maintenance activities will continue to be overseen directly by the Pelican Preserve Pond Workshop Group.
Yeah, and I, and that's, and that's fine for concern. There are lakes in here too, where we have, you know, not one hundred potential around maximum. Twenty-five percent standard really. Where we want to go.
May I? Have a gentleman, Rod, if you would ask a few questions for us.
Thank you. One point. Putting this into context, that we've, I, I would endorse what Ed said about the past years. Back to. Been firefighting with, with our ponds. They've rather been grasping. Carp in to cure the algae and the hydrilla. There's been a lot of ponds have been neglected, and we. Our ponds. Without operating permits, and all the, all that kind of history has to stop. The way, the correct way that we're adopting here is a two-stage approach. This is only the first stage, in my opinion. The first stage is to set some standards. And the second step is to organize and execute. And we haven't got to that yet. And I see that as a two thousand. The first thing we're doing here, which is right, is to set some standards. A gentleman to my left here, a year ago, said the right thing, you know, model pond. I remember you saying that. Yeah, it was a, I know it sounds. We talk. Talking about being proactive and setting, setting a standard. But. I mean, I've listened to engineers, Ed, and, and. I've been. And they're your ponds in Pelican Preserve, and I've, I've just been absorbing this stuff. I'm not an expert, but I'm, I'm a hell of a lot better off than I was a year ago. Tinkles Group's done a great job. I've listened to Molly, I've listened to Cal. You started out, Cal, I remember, back in February to. And I thought. Thought you made a great start. I said that at the time. I've attended a lot of your earlier meetings when Bob. Tried to. Help with the development of this pond standards document that Ed said. Every week. And every month. I've worked with Bob, and I've worked with Ed, and I've tried to help amalgamate this document into one thing where all the family of Gateway and Pluteck all is great. We're even now getting where we're. Store a lake. Banks, which is a very important part of water quality. We're at five million. If we can get zero interest, we may be going more according to yesterday's deliberations. I do want littorals because I think it is. I think we ought to be clear why we're talking about littorals. Is it for bank, is it for bank stabilization, or is it for water quality? There's work done in. This is why we're pushing very hard with you guys, doing a great job on, on the, on lakebank erosion. We're working on this current formula, we're working with Armamax, we're covering it with stone. I believe twenty-six. Four stone. And having spoke to Bob and spoke to Tyler, you're not going to start putting littorals into stone. That's not, you know, it depends what you're putting on the Armamax. If you're putting soil, and, and then you can plant littorals. Doesn't make sense to poke holes in Armamax. Tyler confirmed yesterday that Propecs, they're not going to stand by their warranty if we do that. That doesn't make sense. On littoral. Margaret, I agree with you that the twenty-five percent should be a minimum. It does in fact say at page three. The opening sentence, Gateway will adopt the above regulatory standards as a minimum baseline. Not, not.
They're up, it says.
Where does.
I got to find it. Maybe on the next page, one of the.
Where the. Was silent on littorals. What I'm saying is that when we look at page three here. Is, which is. The Lake County standards, twenty-five. Got that. Confirmed myself, because I was questioning from. On to Gateway standards, and it does say, it's a twenty, the, the Lee County regulations are a minimum baseline. So, I hope, I think that accommodates your, what you're saying, Margaret, overall, as a general statement.
Well.
Go to number nine on page four, I think that also clarifies it. Necessary to establish satisfactory water quality standards for a pond. Gonna make some.
Number. One on page four, it says that the littorals will be removed to meet the twenty-five percent littoral maximum.
Yes. To. Lake ponds with a development orders that are silent on littorals. It's not a statement. Which is the more overarching statement. Let me, I just wanted to say these other, a few things before I hand over to my colleague here. Ed, Ed's right, I mean, you, your. Group has approached your piece of this document, establish planting. Littorals above the twenty-five percent that Lee County have stipulated. And that, and I, and, and I think the air of. Testing is, is makes. Why? Go to the, when you look at the shoreline, we've got two hundred thousand linear feet, that's thirty-eight miles of pond bank. Pelican. Of feet. Thirty-eight miles. And to plant littorals at two dollars, which is your number, Cal, two dollars per linear foot, that'd be four hundred thousand dollars of littoral. Trigger of. Maintenance is forty-five cents per linear, and ninety thousand. Here to maintain. So, it is patent to littorals. For the sake of it. I'm sup, I'm definitely. And use water quality testing as a trigger to establish more littorals if we're in trouble on water. And I think. District. That's all I want to say right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About three months ago. I may be off for you, but. Standing. At the podium. And lamenting the fact that the littorals were causing trash. In her backyard. And I still. Plant caused the trash. I've only seen us cause the trash. So, in other words, the fact he had. Suddenly, that littoral became the focus. And the first thing that I said to myself was, is that person really serious about the statement that was made at the podium? Or is there something else brewing? And this twenty-five percent thing has been brewing so rampantly. Picture from. From Ed, had a number of meetings to get us to sign off on twenty-five percent has been so obvious. Immediately. Raised my antennas with suspicions of what's going on. And then, we had an incident that occurred real late. At least. One of our staff members here, extremely upset. Occurred in. Was all kind of pushed into a corner someplace and dropped. I still think that is for. For our staff to be able to and responsible to. And our. Excuse me, and our wetlands. What we're doing now is actually kind of. Pushing them out of the way, expecting them to be exemplary. From their responsibilities, their job function, their pride. Additionally, I come back, as far as littorals are concerned. I guess where I live, I've got the four thousand percent factor, and so does Bill. Because our lake. Bellagio, the other side, Portofino, has a. Border of littorals that are four feet deep and maintained specifically at four feet deep. Our water quality is nothing. Like the descriptions that I hear and have heard for seven years going on, eight years, here in Gateway. So, then I also go back to the statement that Ed just made. Our littorals. Aren't being maintained. Well, if they aren't being maintained, then. There seems to be this very strong drive to try littoral. And it isn't my imagination, because I kind of read people. My personality. Now, reading people is one of my assets. This is strong. That's. Specific focus is way too strong. We need to step back from this. We also, no one has mentioned South Florida Water Management. And I. Find. A few years ago. And I think that this thing isn't really integrated in a lot of acronym, acronyms. The ding-dongs doesn't really set the state of fact of. Which. A model lake. We hear an awful lot of forceful talk, and we don't hear our engineers or Molly speaking. They sit back, kind of, et cetera. And frankly, there's our experts.
Soon as the board gets finished, we're going to hear from them.
Promise me we will.
I will, yes.
But don't you dare take away my four feet of littorals in my backyard, because I think we're. I think. Managing this correctly, and I think that we need to look. Have more. I don't think.
May, may I ask you a question about what you just said?
For you, yes, for anybody else, forget it.
Are you suggesting that we should not pursue to adopt surface water systems?
But I. But you just. You triggered a, a memo, a thing. In this thing, it also says, the removal enough, I expect that the ladies to bring this up. That you have the right to take away the littorals based upon. Littorals in my. Backyard, let's just rip them out. No, every bit of that phrasing that's in that paperwork that's been done should be. We're going to be doing. Doing something that's for the maintenance, it isn't a matter of aesthetics. Water. Of erosion. It's a matter of getting back to that model again, and that's the model and the standard. And we look to these three people to be the ones that actual determine. And we. We also then make sure that the staff people that are supposed to be involved in this, it's their. That they take. Private.
You go.
Yeah. Louis, I'm there, Pelican Preserve. Correct? Hundred percent. Littoral plantings all around. A swath about four to six feet wide. And my responsibility with the ponds group is to go around roughly once, once a month with aquagenics. Thousand dollars. That if it gets too wide, we have them cut it back.
I think the reason they're doing that is because they've gone so far as.
One other thing too, is that our water quality, we've been testing it for over three years now. I think we've had four times. Very, very good. Three, over three years.
Yeah, we're very lucky in that our ponds are no more than, fifth pond we're. Twenty-five. Five years old, and they haven't been, and they haven't been maintained.
Just for clarification, I, I then never suggested that we should start poking holes in the Armamax, because I believe that. Wanted to. Suggest that. I'm just concerned about us boxing.
Well, the, the problem got on that was the March resident. The. In that, it was a motion for a hundred percent in all. Corrected by. By Danny's checking of the King's English, that it was a hundred percent for. So, it still puts us back that we really don't have a.
Ed, I just, I just have one question from. If I. Call properly, that you wanted to put littorals in at entrances and exits and curves in ponds. Did I hear that correctly?
That's the right rotation.
I can't find that in your order, can you help me?
We, we don't have, we didn't go into that detail, Bill, of defining how to do it, because we didn't know what the numbers are. Each, each pond is going to be coded different. Like, first of all, I got. That's the one that Gary had, because he was a little bit incorrect on that. The phone. Was the South Florida Water Management. To find out what their input, what their position on. Was. They have. About. Littorals, one iota. They will not even talk to you about littoral.
Do you have that in writing?
Go to. Yeah. I, I talked to the, yes, we'd go down there and talk to be my guest. They'll give us. That's. A Lee County issue, that is not a South Florida issue.
Thank you.
They don't have a standard. But going backwards on, onto the, the thing is, is that, that we have. The ERP. And know what we've got. To me, when Tetra Tech gets in doing this work on phase one, you can't just look at that, you've got to. Other. Water quality related issues at the same time, which is bathymetrics, which is the sludge, which is the need for aeration. And Pelican, I was over there looking at the hell of a job. We're doing. Nothing. We're doing nothing. But to take that step, we got to spend the money, and it's non-construction money upfront, to get the information. upfront to get the information to do the design right. And the best example of a catastrophic we had a developer in here that came in and half-assed aeration can tell us it wasn't designed properly. And the people that are telling us it wasn't designed properly are telling us how to do it and do it right, but yet they don't have the bathymetrics. Now, they must have one damn good Ouija board.
I want to stop you. I want to stop you there. Ladies and gentlemen, to start.
First of all, regarding the 25%, I agree. I think everybody agrees that in the language isn't there that way, that the intent is the minimum. And from a engineering technical standpoint, each lake would need to be looked at independently. You're going to have cases where you're going to want to put plantings in certain areas like Ed's saying, your makes sense, corners. Each lake, each pond would need to be looked at individually and to Gary's going to throw acronyms around, but the ERP is the environmental resource permit, which is your stormwater permit that's issued by South Florida Water Management District. So just from a erosion standpoint, working on this program, which so far we've been working with the use, you know, other products, but you know, the methods we've been using recently and continue that we can do possibly something less expensive and less extensive Mary method for the damage on the. So that being said, yes, I think, you know, we have heard from the manufacturer that cutting into that is a bad idea because they won't provide the warranty. So that gets us into whatever we end up with is how do we use, how do we work with the laterals and the Armor Max? And obviously we have options there, you know, depending on each, again, each lake is going to be different. If we can put laterals below the Armor Max is if below that point, that'll help stabilize from the action inside. We're not placing Armor Max would be to do something like a jute or coconut matting, some intensive, you know, there. But from on the sides, we're maxes erosion from the top down, meaning the washouts from coming from the homes. The Armor Max is designed to completely take that into consideration where the plants would come in to play is from more of that bottom up erosion that you might have wave action and from the water, which we do have a lot of that. Probably agree with Ed that this, we're at 4:00 and we have a lot of stuff to discuss. I whole work standards, bathymetrics, there are a lot of components of this that we're probably not even going to touch on today. I apologize in advance because I have to leave in 20 minutes at 4:15 to pick up my wife, so or I'll get fired. So that said, I this is do believe that 25% minimum is a great starting point, but we do need to research those other requirements because we regardless of what this says, we've got to follow what's most stringent. If we already have an existing lake that requires more, we've got to abide by that or we've got to ask for that to be modified. So.
Stop there for one second. I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
One, saying in this document that Ed's group has prepared that you disagree with.
I agree with Margaret and Gary that if we have, I'm not for aesthetic purposes or I think you need to look at that and just that that probably everybody this document, this is of course. Are there individual items in here without singling out anything specifically? I think that each one will say they're individually agreed or think should be otherwise. I believe we all agree with this document.
One segment is this board, our staff is going to be expected to use it in operational management.
Yes.
Well, if there are things in this you don't agree with, then you and Ed or your virtual group are going to have going in because the doc.
Are you with me? I'm, yes, sir.
I'd like a point. What I like about the way in which page four reads is that it, and yes, the pond standards document is meant to lead us into stage two of this, which is our organization, excluding Pelican Preserve because staff, Gateway staff are not looking after your pond. But what I like about this is that it, there is a responsibility on the district to work with team of the Lee resident possible resident conflicts and aesthetics. It states that in 10-4-1-8 or in the, and there's some collaboration going to happen before we just go in and rip out or plant laterals. I don't see with working with the HOAs and working it out.
I agree. Yeah, to follow up on what Rod said first, we're making a mountain.
You're talking about page four, numbered label number one?
With the government order that is silent on lateral plantings, GSDD may at its discretion both plants and residents commercial users on their respective HOA or POAs. All was discussed well ago is Silver Lakes. People do not want those in art and on. You guys can come out and say as a matter of your policy, we can do allow you to remove any natural growing. Everybody talk to the county on that and they will enter. Is that laterals are not a prohibitive item in the DAF. You've got one heck of a lot of people, if you don't, you've got a lot of people in this community that do not want these things in their backyard. They were, they bought lots at 120 to 150,000 dollars on the basis of Westy House or at that time, Westy House telling them pristine lakes. And I don't care what all the standards are and you sell what you want or is, and they were misrepresented and they're not happy about it. They do not want to see those laterals. We've got an educational process here that is major to explain to these people that it may come, it may come to the point where the water quality demands us to address the laterals. We've got a lot of non-residential, non-commercial property that we can solve and meet more than the 25%. We have though talking about the problem that we've had, we've attempted that in the past.
I was addressing Danny here with the second question. It's related to that. Like the way is there's checks and balances because first of all, it puts the district in a position where it has to weigh some people's battery. However, the ultimate responsibility, as Gary said, quality, the quality executive support, then we have, we can trump the HOA and the POA and that's important and that's set out there in number nine and that's why I think it's pretty well written.
Thank you.
The one point, Danny, I know you're leaving, is the question of four sides to a resident, where all four sides are residential, like 87 Pond. Okay, is that Cypress K somewhere?
No.
Is it?
87 and Cypress K, yes.
Okay, tip like that. You've got houses on all four sides. Where was it?
It's got a total requirement.
It does. If it's got, let's say it's got 25% lateral requirements, we've got to say how we're going to do this. You've talked about courts and stuff. We can't put Armor Max around all four sides for the reasons we've given, right? It's made six, seven, eight on West Links because one side is the golf course and in that situation, we can put non-Armer Max on the fourth side and get to the way we're heading.
Yes, and each lake is obviously different and as Ed has mentioned, you know, many of the parts that exist today are inconsistent with the design. If you have a particular lake where your slope, your bank slope hits a shallow or drop and there's a nice shelf out beyond where you might have the Armor Max material, that would create a nice shelf. I don't believe in 87 presentation earlier this year during the summer and looked at, you know, what it was groupings of laterals, initial size, homes.
So what you're saying really, we've moved a long way from the kind of model pond. We're going to have 59 different ponds in a way that are all different and we're going to customize our approach to each one depending on your facilities plan.
I hope it's more the exception, but hoping that the model ponds that, you know, that fits. And so what we've seen so far, 104, we can stick to acres. We're definitely lakes that you cannot be behind Dave Harley's.
Sure.
We know that's a situation that is probably any other.
Okay, circumstances change, the DOs are different, all those things. I get that.
Before Danny leaves, ladies and gentlemen of the board, may I authorize Danny to engage Holmontez to get on these DOs for crying out loud?
Yes.
Do you need a motion?
Well, in a workshop, I'm not sure that's.
Living on.
Matt, how you got so many square feet and much?
And I don't think, I don't know, saying there are a lot of different factors that come into play with that. Now, we do have a permit card for two lakes. All three or four of them that are left.
Right, to have airage.
Unfortunately, you have the 100 total we have. And that requirement is more or less, I don't know. But there, you know, there are different factors. There's the, there's the water quality, there's DO, there's the depth, there's turnover rates that need to be taken. It can be worked into here, but I don't know that this is necessarily appropriate for it.
Okay.
Just to clarify, when he says DO, he means dissolved oxygen, not development order, except for DO.
Danny, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
There are 10, I believe, ponds under construction in Hampton Park. Is somebody on the ball watching those lakes or ponds are being constructed proper? Because I don't want to go through this again with a brand new.
That was what I was going to say. What is the status of those 10 ponds relative to lateral placement?
And generally, you know, yes, there may be specific items that obviously, once we get to the, you know, we as a group are obviously doing a lot better than things had been in the past alone. But yes, we're doing inspections and also they're once inspection, they've got to turn over as-built documentations with actual sections. For any infrastructure, they've got to turn over actual videos of the, so there are several components that are in place today that didn't largely be of this group to protect.
Anything else for Danny?
One.
One.
One more question and it'll probably be a quick one too. And that's on page 11, under engineering maintenance tasks, number two. It says that stormwater ponds should components expected to receive or trap debris and set What's routine? Yearly? I mean, I'd like to lock down routine basis to a more.
You bring up, you bring up a good point and pet peeved with the contract that we currently have that was poorly written, poorly written. In my opinion, the aquatic contractor should be not be the one that we are challenging to be picking up trash around. We can have, I want them to be doing the actual aquatic work is going to be kept track. But again, we get back to the educational stuff. We have got to get out to residents, let, I don't know how many, down stormwater manholes at the back. We've got so many things that are leading to, that are cultural practices that are leading to possible problems, very inexpensive, but we're not getting that without the people.
Well, and for me, I live on Lake. Every once in a while I go down and if there's trash there, I pick it, I get it out, I pick it up, I throw it away. So, you know, I mean.
But what, to what Gary was saying, I don't, I don't know who the lady was that was doing the talking about the trash, but I believe they're running into the same, right, the same, I saw it over at Pelican Preserve, I saw it big time over at Heritage Pond and what early to, when I saw it at Botanica just recently, the dead hydrola and the dead algae that is being spread, it's dying, it's trash. Not just human trash, but that is a problem.
I'm okay with changing.
We locked down the rather than routine leaves it.
I support that.
Won't happen.
I do, too. Are you, are you good?
Mm-hmm.
Gary, please.
Putting it. And doing. Being, what would it be? Actually. The bottom of these lakes and as we do a lake, why should a part of it's there? Or if we do, why are we coming back and attacking that problem after the fact when we're already there with a construction type of situation? Moving dirt around, et cetera. Why aren't we that in?
That was my recommendation in September is that we do the bath, bathymetrics at the same time as we're doing the facilities planning. So that those ponds, we're going to go in there and do construction and we're on these LMEs and there's no room to get there. Let's do all the work at one time. Well, that, that sounds great, but if you're, if you're in there, uh, moving dirt around in those ponds, uh, all of a sudden the bathymetric numbers just go nothing?
Well.
First, first of all, the bath, purpose of the bathymetric is to get the contours of that pond. Going along with that bathymetric is that we're going to be taking samples to determine what that sludge material in, is in there. What's its organic content? To be. Relation to do. If you need it, but to go out and do aeration off of an as-built drawing in Gateway, Danny. You're crazy. You're spending money just foolishly. The people at Pelican Preserve, they're doing it right. They're getting the bath metrics, they're getting that information and they're doing the design. We should be doing.
Just. On. Page six, there's a section, uh, uh, your, that your, is relevant to you, Tyler. Maybe. Maybe the next iteration, maybe that's the correct place to start talk, including bathymetrics, the, because. All get wrapped up in the bank erosion project and the loan and leading to aeration. Is that, is that?
Set every section in this report, Dave, true.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bath metrics and aeration.
How do they take, what's the, the dynamics of getting a core sample?
A core sample is, it's a cylinder on a piece of steel that you stick in the ground and pull out and pull out a sample. It's as simple as that.
So let's say the guy is back there with a machine.
Yeah.
And he's got the bucket and he's working on the bank. And out goes the bucket into the lake and goes scoop.
Now, he goes out there in a boat.
In a boat.
Sludge judge and drops it down into the pond.
You, you go towards the center of the lake and, you know, on boat, it's a. Tight with an open steel cylinder on the bottom of it and you stick it down into the muck, but you just. Thickness as it sits in the lake. So if you can picture it, the top part would be, the bottom would be.
How do you evacuate the cylinder to make sure that it just doesn't come out as yuck? But instead you can actually. Understand what I'm saying?
You're talking about split split samples.
Exactly.
It's, um.
How do they do that?
Science. Over. Certainly. Uh, I mean, it's not going to tell you, you have precisely.
Is the, is the material soft enough that you can use a Plexiglas type of, or a. Plastic type where you could actually get a visual? Is that possible? And my other thing is, is we've had a job. Aviation background in the hangar back there and, uh, it's never used. Rod and I wanted to go out fishing with it, but in any case, why can't we have our own staff go out and do something as, I mean, this thing as. As that and start to, to gather that even if it's under the direction of, and we start to create a routine.
That's a good idea, but the problem with Gary is, is it's, it's not that easy. First of all, I think we first have. To get these elevations control established on each of these ponds.
Well, that.
So that when you do that test, water level. You all did. We had the water levels way down and we didn't measure it. He can.
But.
Two percent solids in the pond. Well, thirty percent water level. It's, it's misleading. So we.
Yeah, but I.
It's, it's a little bit more engineering.
I'm not. The bath. Bathymetric thing. This is in addition to.
Yeah.
I think he, the timing's. So he's already.
He is.
Out in the lake and knows.
Is that true?
I believe that's correct.
Mark, it is a.
Contract. Did CES, Community Environmental Services, Jeff keys to go perform bathymetrics and core sample.
The next lake, I know you love to, 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 to call the. Done or lakes, put an S on the N plural. I, are we going to have those discoveries in a rather recent period?
Yes, that is a plan. Some of them we already do. Jeff has. We are planning on getting, yes, sir.
Anything nuclear?
Not really.
Oh, okay.
Let me ask this, please. Uh, wavelength. Core sampling, is this something that done at the time of a one-time bathymetric, you're referring to. On a regular basis?
Right now, right. If you're going, going to make improvements, like if you're going to take a sample and then go put in aeration, you're trying to judge how much better is it, but.
Okay, so, so therefore, do you disagree?
No, no.
Therefore, it should be something that we, it's thing. Once a lake has been, quote, fixed, then to check, we have the monthly. If that's the right number, an annual core sample, which also then gives, imagine if you had that data.
Gary, if we did that and had the bath metrics and had the grid system on the ponds, there's absolutely no reason, since we have to vote, that you could do just exactly what you're saying on a regular basis.
If we need an annual core test, I, I'm totally in favor of including a core testing in this document. Uh, so probably page nine where we get into the water testings and that.
How, Molly, explain to us how complicated it is to read.
You need to know your soils, your different types of, of things. So somebody will have to, you might need.
Absolutely.
The, what, what I was trying to say here earlier, Molly, standards, didn't talk. Talks about. New year. And staff. It's different, different in Pelican Preserve even. So we, that's beyond the scope of this meeting and I. So, so for the core sampling, I agree with Gary, maybe it's annual, I don't know. But on the, on the six, on the six, uh, bathymetric studies that have been standing at this. Six, four meetings ago, it gave us about seventy-five squick. Asked him at the end if he would summarize, an executive do with. Because, because I, I don't feel good about going forward with all the rest of the ponds unless we're stated that we. I still haven't. Seen that.
Is that GIA?
I, I think, I think you guys now have the, uh, I believe you were, uh, distributed the, uh, reports of the bath metrics.
Yes, we were.
I think you guys have.
Yeah, but.
But what do we?
But I'm saying, it, what's, here's the data, what's it mean in terms of money?
Correct.
Where, where are we going with it?
What, what happens next?
Yeah, that's what's missing.
What you've asked him to do is additional and beyond the scope of what he was originally hired for. So if you want him to do the scope.
Well, he's skilled enough to be able to say, here's the data that I've got for these six, but do with it.
But he did the chemical analysis, though, Ron.
Anyway, that, I just don't want to digress too much.
Done that, of the, of the samples.
I, I want to support going forward on bathymetrics, but I really want to.
Well, if the person isn't scaya, it isn't term you just. I'm coming up. Qualified, but skilled.
Trained.
Trained.
Right.
If, if, look with. By God. God model pond, so that it's, we do this and then. Gather. Does the. Continue. These are. Are, and we have hypothetically, theoretically, staff that knows exactly what those are. We have a schedule, even, and. Is constantly gathered at the right time with the proper triggers on their laptop or whatever it is. And all of this stuff suddenly in five years from now, it's planned. My, my fear is all these things start as a one-time shot and then they all get forgotten.
Actually, you've got quite a few things going on in quite a few different collection buckets right now. So you've got your standard, which is a positive. The next. Now, being collected by Ed Tingle is being put into different buckets.
It's Molly.
They're all. All over the place and it's a missing, you've got something to try to bring. I kind of. This is my little Bible and course. We're working together as an all. We use this now as a working tool. And so there are some things that we have in place that we're using as a group that you're not seeing maybe, but we are starting to correlate and get this information together.
This, the. US Forbes two months ago, we developed, but you haven't had a chance to review it yet and. Well, I. What, I want to just give Molly a minute to, to show you that we have it back.
Well, this is actually something that Tetra Tech has put together. And so thanks. They're missed. We're working as a group now, as a core gathering all the. And who the players are and what we got. This thing right here has brought us together as a working group now with some guidance. So we're, we've, we've got, we've gone through and decided who we don't want. So. Started arranging. Tetra Tech's come up with.
One interruption.
Yes.
You have that written someplace so that, God forbid, you're all. And there's.
We're not there yet. Right now, you're in the, we're in the. Tetra Tech started this. As soon as I saw this, I'm like, we're going with this for now. This is what we're working tool. We. Never can give you enough information. That's one of the things we wanted to just. Back. Can we implement some standards? Can we implement some things so, or direction? Ahead and have. To start. Headed behind. Behind the scenes, but bringing you up. Stopping us. Us from doing actual work because we're constantly, let's gather everything up so we can come in to.
Interruption. Can't you delegate that authority to somebody else so that you keep working and somebody else does the data base? Management.
We're, we're working on it. We're, we're just not there yet.
Here's, here's what's missing in my view. We've got to go digital. We've got to, we've got to put this into a folder and get it available to a web portal in one depository rather than in paper. So everybody, including the residents, can check and look at all.
Have to get it together be, instead of being constant asked and warned to ask it together.
Good. We have built.
Yes, I saw. Would you, if you have something to help us, please come up.
Henry Rivera. Recently met with, uh, Dave Place. For the. Most recent man. Renumbering. All the ponds. So we have a standard that's not being used. Uh, we currently have a contract that's being implemented. The map itself, we're going to have utilized their system so that we would have the bathymetrics, we would have the, uh, water quality, we would have all this in, in addition to the videos and everything that have come. Everything is. That being. Buckets, if you will, everything is in one location. Contract is within the last. Week or so, but right now, as within Pelican, we, as Molly was indicating, we've got information, more information than you guys could have ever hoped to absorb and understand. But the point being that it's all scattered and a lot of it is in Gabor's head. So. Depository. Can go in and, but you've got a laptop, boom, you plug in. On that lake.
They're even putting littorals in there where the littoral planting is. Everything's going to be there. Bob and I have talked about that and I've talked to Scott. That's one of the next, then, our. Two people that can produce these maps that they're using, which is basically your guy.
Yeah.
But that, this, it costs money. It's cost money.
Yeah.
And they're doing it through a budget. Unfortunately, our committee doesn't have a budget. Uh, but working with Scott, I think. One thing that has not been done yet, we have inventory to our, we, we. Know what kind of classification they are, but we have no idea and nothing written down as to how many littorals we have in the ponds we've got. There's a ton of stuff that sort of gets back to where I think Gary is, is. And.
I think that's important.
There's a lot of stuff to put on that checklist.
Right there. Not a document, but basically this, this is a letter agreement between GIS and Pelican Preserve Ponds Group.
Twenty thousand or thirty thousand.
And that's where.
Categorize all this information into one bucket.
And that's a third of what we've done. And, and where, where is this master bucket going to be? Be using GIM.
It's Hillary's website.
In a cloud, in a cloud, right?
Well, that also.
Eddie, Eddie's.
With digital, we need to. Have. Folks not having to utilize their own home computers, et cetera. When they take on a task like this, they should have those laptops that they can have all of this data and be putting it into directly, directly.
I think. It needs to be iPad, not laptops in this day and age.
Henry, you.
But I. Go with.
Just want to ask Henry a question real quick. On that proposal that Dave gave you, are you making specifically for Pelican or are you adding to the existing database that Gateway has?
We're adding to the database that GIS adds of Pelican.
Make sure he's not.
On what we.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Exactly. If you want to make copies of these.
Report, our monthly report, you listed virtually everything that's going into that database. If you go back to. Report. Report. There was a list of all of the things that are in that database.
Yep.
See, that gets into one of the management issues that we, we, we know we got to talk about. But they're doing things over there that you've got volunteers and. Of hours. Of doing things that in my opinion.
It's not abnormal if you're retired, Ed.
Yeah, I think that's the difference. A lot more.
I'm retired.
I'm retired. First off, but.
Achieve that level. Yet they're retired. That means that they has demeanor. We're looking at talent here for crying out loud.
And, and the issue is they are, they are, they are getting into things about how much money they spend per pond or doing this and doing that. Geppert showed me a schedule like there's no. What, what boils down to though is somebody has got to do that. Which means that's our management team.
Oh, I want to give. Anything. He has to say, and then Molly, and we're tied, so. Every. Thing you got right now.
Okay. Um, just a couple of quick comments. There was some discussion earlier about the lakes in Pelican Preserve and how they follow with DOs and all that. Just to be clear, there is another layer of regulatory agencies that you get to deal with because there are no DOs for the Pelican Lakes. And they get separate permits through the city. It's an S I T permit. So there's not a DO for Pelican Lakes. They're S I T permits through the city, which is just another facet that we get to deal with unfortunately.
All right, so what does S I T mean?
I think it's. Site, I believe. I don't think it means anything. It's not an act.
But it, does it describe a, a littoral issue?
It, it does. They have entirely separate land development codes from Lake County and I couldn't tell. But I know. They do have different sets of codes, so.
Tyler's new lake. They part. They're going to be similar to Gateway because those are different.
They're all.
Does he mean the?
Are all within the city.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, those, those are all city ponds, so they've got to be city code.
Okay.
Yes.
There's city land development code. I can tell you one particular is that one site's. Myers only requires four to one. Just, there's a lot of little differences, so. For agencies that have jurisdiction over lakes within Gateway. Uh, so that's one. Two. Something. On page four of the pond standards there, there's. It doesn't. Doesn't necessarily mean the same thing. Under item one, where it says planted littoral shelf shall be created and calculated and or reduced to maintain twenty-five percent of the total ability of a pond. A planted littoral shelf is, if you can fit shelf. That is. Approximately two feet deep or not to exceed two feet deep, that takes up twenty-five percent of the shoreline of the lake. And it goes from water out. Shelf of dirt. So then separately here, it says the C D D shall work with the local H O A regarding location of the littorals to be removed. Not necessarily the same thing. Not all littorals have to be on a littoral shelf on the regular. So there's some different words that are getting thrown around and confused there, I think.
Okay.
It's either the shelf.
Certain. Oh, has. Thank you. Yes, sir.
And the littoral. Starts. At one foot above the control elevation. We have tried. Our littoral. Plantings between the one foot water depth and one major. We have. In the. Creation of the water levels.
It's crazy.
And the last thing we want to do is sit there and spend a bunch of money and putting at one. By some. And then all of a sudden have us eight feet away from the nearest drop.
There on number. One, is your, should we perhaps redefine, instead of putting P L S there to start with, should that be something else like a general statement of littorals? Is that your object?
Well, it's, it's. Five percent. Thing. I think is maybe just not the best way to go about it, in my opinion. Shell. The shelf of dirt is supposed to be twenty-five percent of the length of the lake. Yes, that part is clear. How you get to the number of plants is totally different. It's essentially one plant per foot plus if you're deep water, you get to, plus if you're this. Thing that. Codes. That shelf. How you get to the number of plants around the lake, I don't call it. Just call it the number of plants. And Lake County Land Development Code says one plant per foot. So you've got a eight hundred foot lake, you get eight hundred plants. Those eight hundred. Which is. Twenty-five percent of the lake. So I, I think maybe some nomenclature within this disgust is. Be confused.
Out. Away from the bank at, at low water.
Yes, sir. So the. But why? It takes up. So that gives you this big area to go put plant idea behind. Some cases. Is you're going to have residents that don't want to have that littoral shelf behind their house. And that's why they recommend that littoral shelf to be in other non-residential areas like golf courses, preserves, tractor road.
Can you? You just.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Because that is the first time that I have been acquainted with that.
On that. Ten. Four eighteen warning. That's the problem.
Mr. Chairman, we might be helpful. Can you ask Tyler if they can do like a graphic about do this, don't do this? Like they do in some areas, like a, just an overhead kind of graphic? Does that be helpful, Tyler?
Absolutely, I can do that for it.
Work it short.
They have four.
I believe that's it. Just as a general update on the lakes, uh, we are moving forward with that talked about. And design. Sign of the, of the next lakes in Gateway. All I think is. Everybody being on board and moving forward with all that. So I think it's going well. I think that's my answer.
Page four, I do have an issue with, uh, number one. If we're going to leave it that way, I'd put minimum. I do like the way he's been stating. Shall be. Is exclusively. Bacopa sometimes does grow and doesn't grow well. There's other ground covers, so I don't want to say exclusively. Let's see.
So number one, you want to put minimum in there?
Minimum or adjust the language.
Okay. And you want to take exclusively, exclusively out of seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you just want to put ground cover should be used?
Ground cover.
Instead of the bacopa?
Actually, yes. I'd rather have something to that.
Bacopa was selected because it looks like.
Okay, so that's a generic term, ground cover, right?
Because we felt that that would sell with people as opposed to a flowering grows.
Well. If we put low growing.
Yes.
Will that?
Does ground cover mean low growing, Molly?
Yes, we could do that.
And if you want to keep the bacopa in there, we could do bacopa or low growing.
Well, bacopa is low.
Bacopa is the, the.
Well, saying it will. Different.
So we could even say bacopa is the desired species.
That's good.
Page six, under stormwater pond bank erosion. Paragraph. Be completed. Didn't use the painting efforts for restoration repairs. It, once again, this might do what Rod. It's not. Who's going to be doing it, so. Page seven. The last bullet, I'm not sure how that ties into this whole. Restoration. To how surface water runoff quantities and flow velocities will be controlled to prevent erosion. Drains and area drains away from pond shorelines will be provided. Because it starts off with wash offs, wash outs are said, so we can relook at that.
Which, the, the second letter?
Uh, this.
But the issue, and you guys somewhat started into that last night, and we, we've got some legal issues here that. Need to be figured out. We have, we all know we have an L M E. Goes from the twenty, from the control elevation back twenty feet. But our developments here. Or Gateway not being built in accordance with plans and specifications. And community neighborhood covenants. Call for how drainage is to be handled. Good example, where I live, Rod. The front half of your lot goes to the street. The back half of the lot goes to your lake based upon a swale between the two lots.
That's correct.
So what have we done? We have created a point source every other lot.
Actually.
About a point source of erosion?
A point source of potential erosion. Yep. And I don't see any way that, I know looking at my covenants in our community, I don't think there's any way you can get around it. To go to a property owner and tell them that they have to jointly put. Jummy where. For you all to pick up the tab like was. The edge of the L M E to the lake. That'd have somebody. They tie something to it. How are you going to get that property owner to tie it in? That's. Danny, you're. Going to be doing when they're doing the facilities plan. You can't do these reports on forty years. These reports. Reports in the office. You've got to go out on each of these lakes and Tyler, Danny Miller. We've got to walk these lakes and specifically on aerial photo, show where we have those issues. To be correct. Trying to. To correct them internally at the house is going to be very difficult, in my opinion.
Can they, can, yes. Uh, that we've just spent a lot of money on, identify those as well as aerials?
Yeah. You don't have that scale. You can't blow it up that much, Bill. You just have to go and walk it. It's. Walk along. The lake.
You have to walk.
There's a washout. It's easy to see. But that's stuff that needs to be added to the, uh, to the drawings.
And we're trying to get the H O A to step. To doing. The work from the house down to the L M E. But it's going to be pretty hairy in some places, particularly we don't have.
We had a few where we tell them if they get it there to the, to the easement, we'll take it the rest of the way. Basically have agreed to do that. We've done some of them. So. You know, it's not.
On page. Page eleven. Number. You've agreed to the eight, well, this is agreeing to the eight feet and so with plantings, it says something about staking the system. I wanted to know who's going to be putting the stake height. It's a specified height, but no height. So I'm not sure what that's, what we're talking to.
You and Pelican Preserve with your stakes, how high do you go for littoral?
We had a few stakes, but they didn't work well.
Why not?
They fell over.
What, what, what's the solution?
Uh, that we put some more.
Take out the water.
Cement, you know.
The height.
End marker. For the littorals.
Height we do for the width.
Okay.
We don't have anything for the height. The, the issue is that. It's, we've got. Littorals that here are in the community that are out of hand. Six, seven, eight feet tall. We don't have any of those. No, we've got that all over, all over.
Find the.
That's. Level basically at where the water goes over the weir in the pond. So at basin five, it's elevation twenty-four.
Is it? An out of water level?
It's the. Elevation, which just as the name implies, is the control elevation where that weir is set at.
Molly, do you think we should specify the height of these?
Yes, because you will not have, if this is approved, you, your staff will not know how to follow this.
What do you recommend?
Up to what a bull rush would be, probably six to eight feet.
I was thinking more like three or four.
Golf, golf versus living if it gets over two feet.
Two to the.
Two to three feet.
Type two.
Could you live with that?
Two to three feet.
Okay, what? So, to number. To number two.
Eleven. It says treat for algae and or anaerobic aquatic plant like to restrict growth within five percent. And this is. In your environmental permit. You will have periodic seasonal apple clear. Need to be. Nutrients. However, there are algies that are going to be treated, but be in a.
The reason that's in there, uh, and I've seen it from other communities. Uh, it, it might be worded better in a way, but what we're trying to do is specify. We've got. The next time we bid this workout, which we haven't even talked about yet, which is another urgent. These bidders got to know that we're going to be out holding their feet this Friday this time. You're going to go out and you're going to be there monthly, but you're not going to produce. A specification, and in this one, the inference is ninety-five percent. You're going to have that lake at that ninety-five percent, fifty-five percent. That's it.
So should.
It's the only way it works.
Should we put a time? You know, limit on this if we keep the five percent?
Anytime. Anytime.
Should we put?
The rest that's out there want that stuff, but you might. A coverage. Like this, bid it and then take an alternative bid for ten percent or fifteen percent. Because I think when you go five percent, you're going to see a person from the.
Isn't that mostly in the summer too?
Ask the Pelican, the Pelican Preserve guys.
You can bloom over, that's what I'm saying. Sometimes when the lake gets algae, it doesn't go.
A treaty.
If after it's treated.
Depends upon the treatment. What you, what you maintain those guys do, what you require. You can ask for the sky, but you're going to pay for it. What's the happy me answer that we?
We put it.
Is doing it in a percentage.
Should we put a time limit with? Well, if it happens, sometimes you. Is longer. Even though, even though it's being treated because they're trying to follow.
Vendor's not doing its job.
It doesn't. Can't treat it till it appears. Sometimes you can't.
Well, then we want to define what, what constitutes the. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You want to define that as to when it becomes a nuisance and it's out floating around. But the whole thought here was is to stand. Right now, we go to our vendor and our hands are tied. We don't have anything that's, uh, gives us any authority to do anything.
On that, on that subject, I, I didn't mean to interrupt your flow, Molly. The Pelican. To this, I believe from memory, a contract with Aquagenics, is it around eighty the grand for maintenance?
About ninety thousand.
Yeah. But exactly. To do as far as maintaining littorals is concerned for every pond.
And they get, they give us a report of the lake. Take care of this, do this, do that.
Okay.
See, they do one thing that.
Not just. Like Gary was saying. Saying earlier, we're not just saying maintain those littorals, we've got to tell them to what standards?
And inspect them.
Right.
The inspection.
Sorry, Molly.
Unwanted species.
What, what number? On twelve?
Page twelve, unwanted species. During the dry and low water level seasons, plants such as firefly, hanna or other can be cut back for a kept look. During the dry and low water level seasons, plant, plants such as fire flag, Hannah, or other can be cut back for kept look at the discretion of the. Should state. Something to the effect of behind the, uh, residence end. Way, so if you're driving down the street, fire flag that is dying off of seasonal dial should be cut and removed. So add all such plants located behind homes and or traffic flowways will be cut every dry and not. Option of, of saying if, uh, they not having. A decision. On it, it's just something that's automatic. So if you're going along. A night, what I call them, your money makers. If it's dead. Been cut. So if you go through a lot of your property right now, your fire flag should have already been cut. What you're doing when you're cutting, it is going to be a little bit more money for you, for your budget. However, you're removing nutrients when you take off that layering of dead growth and it's going to steadily. Having that dead vegetation.
Do you bid this as a change order item with the contractor? Because it's, it's undefined for how it did. So you would do that as a change order, uh, item where you get a miscellaneous that. Basis. A, as ordered?
We could, how do we handle any other places?
Put it in as a, for a full. Cutting and. Removal.
So you want to add.
Change order as ordered.
Refer to. It's something like paying particular attention to visibility from residents and some from the street.
Are these all things you could live with in?
So far.
And so it's, uh, every dry season. You.
Happens. Too, is that's where a lot of your, uh, your fire flag, your water levels are going down, the vines start to, and fire flags. Look, and then you get all the vines. And you get a lot of, of the residents are looking at that, and that's one of the things that tree think of it. She looking or not kept.
These are the things. Things that are going to convert over to the specifications that go out for bid. So that these guys come in and each one of these lakes, they, they know what that requirement is, they know the number of trips, they know what they've got to do. The only thing that we've got to watch is to make sure that we don't put things in like words like guarantee, one hundred percent. Things that are just going to, almost impossible to achieve without a huge expense. So define things in terms, we understand. It has to be. Perfect, because we can't afford perfect.
Molly?
Those are my suggestions.
Oh, good. Well, ladies. Board members have things, uh, that they absolutely have to say. Now is the time. I would like to give the audience, in addition to the Pelican Preserve folks, pants to. Line, too.
Absolutely.
Please, please, uh, board members, if you have, if you have to say it, now's the time. I don't hear anything. Please come, please come up to the podium so we can all.
Yeah, Henry Chever again. The only thing I have to add, um. Brought up. And one of the things that Rod was talking about. If you want to make this work, you have to inspect what you expect. There's no other way of making it happen. You've got.
Thank you. Other people, please.
Yeah, I'm. Just again. A member of Ed's, Ed's group in Silver Lakes. Uh, one thing I want to just point out, the development. Should be, what's being worked out. Like in our case, where we, you do have those, and you have no littoral requirement with either one of them. And. We have our residents who are waterfronts, one hundred and sixty-five residences. Five have said they wanted to keep them. Hundred and six. And. You know, the way. Have a vision that's working is, as long as you're not, if an HOA. And request something to be done consistent with the DM. Consistent with permit. Not being bought. And there's no water quality issue, we fully support the backup water quality issue thing. We have no water quality issues in Silver Lakes. Never have. We don't have an erosion, just blocked. It should. Be, I would believe, the Gateway Services should eliminate the vegetation that people don't want. Want them? Keep them. The big majority. To be gone. They should be gone, because it's not consistent with the, with the development order. We all bought our properties expecting something, and we pay premiums. And, and yes, I know there's the, you know, your model lake, but that's not what it says. That what the environmental permit says. And so it would, and that's why. Follow the environmental permit, as long as it doesn't create a problem. And if it does, you've got a backup plan. It shouldn't be. It really shouldn't.
Thank, thank you.
It is not, but it shouldn't be.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm very brief. Every. Get a re. The lake. And. Recently. At Silver Lakes, you guys have got grass clippings in your lake. No one from your HOA has ever. Stop this. Back at. Going to be. I want to take. Promotion. I'd like to put the responsibility back to you to go back to your HOA and tell them to knock it off. We've asked and asked and asked, and you never seem to help us.
Individual homeowners, are you, can you say it's the HOA landscaper? Everyone's got their own landscape.
That's what I. Yes.
But I, I think if you went to our HOA.
Okay. So you're saying we haven't communicated that, which I'm also very big on, on communication. It's, if we haven't communicated that, it's about time we did.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon DeRosie. I live in Devonshire. And, but, uh, one of the. Problems is that our ponds are so dif- different that one model is not going to be sufficient. It's like. Five models. To choose from. Uh, it seems to me we need, uh, in a. Category. Is like, uh, for instance, I face. Preserve. So there's lots of growth on the preserves and littoral. So you have all the different criteria that need to be evaluated, have. Or you have too many littorals according to the statistics. If your pond is healthy and has no issues with sediments and has no erosion issues, then why break, why fix something that's not broken? But if you do have issues like we have in Devonshire, then you mender for. Where there is a preserve with lots of littoral, uh, vegetation, but the other side is all eroding. So you need some other. Add things. You need the generalized standards, and yes, maybe several models of what. And then you need to educate each of the individual homeowners association, which I'm a member of. May, it matters. People in. I'm. Here to get this education. I'd love to have copies or, or have. Already got. But I tried to find any. I am. Six months in. The year. I still go north in the summer, although this is my home. Care about it. Know how to get. The information. Uh, I know Elle was doing evaluation. She said of every pond. I'm number seventy, but I don't see anywhere where information. So, uh, I need more help with that. I need to, I, I like to be more involved with committees that, that exist and be able to go back to my community and say, you know, this is to pay. These are the kinds of things we need to know, and if you don't like your littoral, or if you want one, you know, you need to get that.
Thank you very much.
I, I, I want to say to you, I, I'm really, uh, I really appreciate those comments. I think digital communication, which we're all talking about at the moment, is really important with our residents. We talked earlier about it, a story this day. I think that. It's a project for two thousand and sixteen for this district.
Yeah, I'd like to see that happen because I have come in a couple of times to the building, but if somebody's. I don't have. Any place where I can get the data and be able to incorporate it into my own, uh.
That's got to be on our radar screen for next.
Request. For email, digital communication.
I'm sorry.
From DeRosie.
I think talk. You guys are doing. Is, is having a de- a deposit, depository of inf- or a. Connect. This through a web portal. That's got to be on our radar screen for next year.
Ladies and gentlemen, for. Participated, you helped us a lot, and, uh, we, uh, speaking for myself, and I think we've learned. And. And thank you. Have a nice evening. We are adjourned.
Everywhere but over that line.